About the time normally somebody talks.
We call this meeting to order.
Please rise. Oh yes, oh yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Tonight we have with us for our invocation, we have Pastor Micah Myers from Lambeth United Methodist Church, 1042 Hartsfield Pike, Gallatin, Tennessee. He grew up in West Tennessee and had a variety of experiences with multiple church traditions. He attended Martin Methodist College and the Tennessee Tech, from which he holds a master's degree in clinical mental health counseling. He's previously served at two churches in Cookeville and at Lebanon First United Methodist Church. He and his wife Jill have two children, Amelia and Asher. Jill is a special education teacher at Mount Juliet Middle School. Thank you Pastor Myers for being with us.
Thank you for the invitation. Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we give thanks to you this night. We give thanks for the people who came to this place and prepared for this meeting, and for all who showed up to do the work for this county. Lord, we ask for a spirit of wisdom and of guidance, a spirit of cooperation, a spirit of opportunity. We pray this night that your spirit resides here in this place. We ask for wisdom in the midst of where we are, and we give thanks for each individual who showed up. We give thanks for freedom to be able to speak and to work together. We pray this in the strong and powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll, Mr. Kemp.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
Yeah, Ms. Kruger. Ms. Krueger is sick tonight. She contacted me earlier. He's out now. Mr. Kemp, did you intend to be in the queue or are you just marking present? Okay, okay. All right, our agenda is before you. I would like, I would like if no one objects as we look at our agenda, I'll just go ahead and state this, if there's no objection, we'll roll on with our agenda. But I would like to move our certificates of recognition up before, right after approval of the minutes without objection. Okay, is there a motion to approve our agenda? Okay, motion made by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Echols. See no one in the queue? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Echols. See no one in the queue? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Sullivan, will we yield the floor to you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Ms. Betsy Hawkins to come up if she will, and anyone else that would like to join her tonight. We lost a great man in Jim and wanted to take just a few minutes to recognize him this evening. This is a certificate of recognition, a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Mr. James Barrett Hawkins. Whereas the passing of Mr. James Barrett Hawkins on December 6, 2019, created a deep, long-lasting void in the community, and his countless efforts to lift people will be missed by many. And whereas Mr. Hawkins grew up in Gallatin, graduated from Gallatin High School in 1974, continued his education at Center College and Peabody College, and received his law degree from Duke University in 1982. Whereas prior to opening his own law practice in downtown Gallatin, Mr. Hawkins worked for the Tennessee Supreme Court and the Legal Department of Bell South, and before returning home to serve as the managing attorney for the Legal Aid Society of Middle Tennessee in the Cumberland's, representing countless low-income and at-risk families in various types of civil cases. And whereas he continued to serve the citizens of Sumner County as a member of the school board, and was an active member of numerous civic organizations. And whereas Mr. James Hawkins shared his legal knowledge with the community, publishing over 400 articles in his Tennessee Legal Column, which ran in regional newspapers across middle Tennessee, and as a way of making people feel special. He attended public events, taking photos and sharing stories of social media outlets, left a legacy of positive attitude and kindness for all of us to follow, and he was a great friend, a devout Christian who loved his life at the service of others, and, excuse me, he, who loved his life at the service of others, and is an example of what we should all aspire to accomplish in our own lives. Just one quick story here. Every day I drive through the city of Gallatin, and I can't tell you the times that I would see Jim out there on the public square, helping an elderly lady across the street, or taking a picture of someone, and you would see it on social media. Alls you had to do, if you knew James Hawkins and you live in Sumner County, is follow him and you would know what was going on, and he was just, he was a great man. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in a regular session on the 27th day of January 2020, that this body does hereby owe a debt of gratitude to Mr. James Barrett Hawkins, and honor his memory for the leadership, integrity, and dedication he displayed over the decades. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the family of Mr. James Barrett Hawkins. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Sullivan. Second by Commissioner Graves. All in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I just want to say a quick statement about Jim. He was a man, he was a man. If you wanted to be positive about something, just look at him anytime, social media or meet him in person. I knew him since 1973 or '04. He was on, when I played football, we was around each other all the time, and we grew up together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Graves. We could have the Pritchard family come up? I think Commissioner Sullivan's gonna join me. Come on up, Maddox. Come on up here. That's why you can be on TV. Whereas Maddox Pritchard, a student at Station Camp Middle School, created a shovel with markings, a measuring tool which allows a person to see how deep and how wide a hole is being dug. And whereas after winning first place in his grade level at the MTSU State Invention Convention, Maddox was selected to attend the National Invention Convention in Washington, DC in May of 2016, where he won an award sponsored by Stanley Black &amp; Decker for students in grades four through 12. And whereas Maddox's measuring shovel earned an approval by the US Patent and Trademark Office in October of 2018, which was followed by his appearance on the television show Shark Tank, where he was offered and accepted a licensing agreement with a $40,000 investment. And whereas Maddox, in addition to being an inventor, is an outstanding student who has demonstrated remarkable talent in his future plans to study to be a veterinarian. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 27th day of January 2020, that this body hereby congratulates and commends Maddox Pritchard for his accomplishments and wishes him a happy, successful future. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Maddox Pritchard, and I so move. Second by Commissioner Goode. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. It was just a great experience to be on the show, and thank you for everything y'all have done in the school, and thank you.
Thank you, Maddox. Oh, that's yours. That's yours. And if you, if you happen to see the episode of Shark Tank, it was really pretty remarkable what he's done, and amazing to see. Maddox, what grade were you in when you started? Was it fourth grade? So, fourth grade, he came up with something that's earned a patent. It's really remarkable. So congratulations, Maddox. Commissioner Becker.
Mason and your family can come up here. All right, this is a resolution honoring Mason Wettingale. Whereas Mason Wettingale, a junior at Pope John Paul II High School, received a rank of Eagle Scout, the highest, the most prestigious honor for boy scout, and with his hard work and commitment to help others, has become an inspiration to us all. And whereas, as part of his Homes for Heroes Scout Project, Mason raised $22,000 through area businesses and community donations, which helped him renovate five unoccupied apartment units for military veterans at the Sumner County Veterans Home in Gallatin, refreshed the landscaping, and installed military service flags beside each apartment door to commemorate service branch. And whereas, as a result of Mason's hard work to renovate these units, the number of affordable housing available to homeless and economically challenged veterans has increased, and the Sumner County Veterans Home has received a well-deserved attention from generous donors and volunteers who were instrumental in the installation of a new roof, the renovation of the veterans' community room, and donations of food, toiletries, and bedding for all the residents. And whereas in addition to being extraordinary student with tremendous leadership skills, Mason is a member of the National Honor Society of Arts, a member of the Youth in Government, is a Model UN participant, and has received numerous scout honors and awards, including obviously the Eagle Scout Award in 2019 for its exceptional efforts and perseverance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting this regular session on this 27th day of January 2020, that this body hereby congratulate and commends Mason Wettingale for his outstanding accomplishments and wishes him a happy, successful future. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk to furnish a copy of this resolution to Mason Wettingale, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Echols and Chris Taylor. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
First of all, I would like to thank y'all for allowing me to be here. It's an honor, and it was an honor working with these veterans. They had a huge impact in my life, and they really shaped me as a person, and allowed me to see the world how it is, and allow other people to stand with me and to make a difference in this community. So I just wanted to thank y'all for allowing me to be here today.
Mason, it's so exciting to see your commitment to service, and we wish you all the best in all that you pursue. We know you're gonna do great things. All right, I've got some announcements. I think the way I want to proceed is, I'm gonna go through the announcements and then we'll do public comments right before we do the election to fill the vacancy in, to the school board, because most of our comments are candidates. So we'll get to public comments in just a second. I do have a few announcements. We received a card from Ms. Hawkins, and she stated, "I want to thank you for your kind gift to Gallatin First United Methodist Church in memory of Jim. From his childhood, this church was his home, his family, his source of peace and joy, and ultimately his place of final celebration. I appreciate so much your generosity to an organization that was so dear to Jim's heart. Sincerely, Betsy Hawkins." And she wanted us to pass along this thanks to everyone for the contribution that we made to Gallatin First United Methodist in Jim's behalf. Also, if you look on your desk, there's a couple different recognitions or events coming up. One that's not there that you should, I think Ms. Andrews is gonna work with Ms. Dinnon to get an invite out. February 5th at Station Camp High School is Bison Grill. It's $6 for an entree, $1 dessert. Everyone is invited to come. We will need to RSVP, but that information will come out via email, and it supports, it supports the CDC program at Station Camp High School. So we encourage everyone to come out for that. Ms. DeWitt has an announcement.
Clarify, I put an invitation on everybody's desk this evening. I'm a board member for Actors Point Theater Company, and so I would love the opportunity to introduce you, my friends, to this theater company. They will be doing a performance the next two weekends. The performance space is at Volunteer State Community College, and so on Sunday, the 9th, I'll be hosting a reception for you. And then Dr. Faulkner thought it would be a great opportunity to help you also take a look at their newest humanities building. It's the Steinauer Rogan Black Humanities Building, and they have a black box theater there as well. So it'd be a great opportunity for you to see some neat parts of campus and then attend the show. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt. Also, you have an invitation. We have an event, the school system does, on Friday. It's, Ms. Wexler is one of the premier speakers on literacy around the country now, and it's gonna be a pretty big event. The Commissioner of Education is gonna be there as well as leaders from around the state. Our state representatives will be there, state senator possibly, but just wanted to extend an invitation to you. So you have an invitation for Friday. If you don't want to use the form to RSVP, if you'll just shoot me a text or message and let me know, and I'll get you on the list. Wanted to make those known to everybody. Your veteran service report is attached. We're gonna now go, does anyone else wish to sign up for public comments on an item on the agenda this evening? Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. All right, first up tonight, we have Mr. David Matsumoto. Mr. Matsumoto, as you come, you have five minutes to speak. We ask, our rules of decorum are such that we don't, yeah, we, rules of decorum are such that we do not impugn the integrity of any citizen of Sumner County, elected official, or institution. You'll have five minutes, and Mr. Kemp will let you know at? One minute. If you don't mind stating your name and address for the record, and then Mr. Kemp will start the timer after that.
My name is David Matsumoto. My address is 229 Blackthorne Lane in Gallatin, Tennessee. I've been a resident of Sumner County for 17 years, with five children who've been enrolled in our county's schools since kindergarten. I would like to talk about the school board appointment. First, I want to believe in the best of people. I want to believe that the county commission and the school board can work together for the best of Sumner County. They only cross paths at certain points, and tonight is one of those points. This appointment needs to look at the future of the county. It can still have a huge impact in the next six months if the appointee is strategic in promoting new policies. Earlier this month, I emailed you all, asking you to nominate and vote for me for this appointment. Tonight, I am reiterating that request. Furthermore, I want you to know that at the prompting of two current school board members, as well as ongoing public support, I plan to run in the school board election this upcoming August. I admit that I am not the most eloquent or refined speaker. I tend to be very technical in nature, and I simply want to make a difference in our county's future with some of my ideas. I would hope that if something I say or do, or something you hear about me rubs you the wrong way, you as county leaders would reach out to me directly and ask for clarification. I want to believe the best in you as a legislative body and as individuals, and I would hope you want to believe the best in me. I believe we all want to make this county even better than it is. We can only figure that out if we talk to each other and collaborate as partners. For example, I envision a standing agenda item at school board meetings which requests and welcomes the input of the county commission's education committee members. Then at the education committee meetings, I envision the same, not only asking for a report from the director of schools, but also the monthly input of school board members themselves. Personally, I would plan to attend education committee meetings and provide my input when requested. Just as iron sharpens iron, each respective body can provide valuable input to the other. I'm a CPA with a background specifically in auditing and forensic accounting. I believe in numbers and data and documentation. I believe in objectivity and metrics and accountability. I would bring a unique financial perspective to the board's collective knowledge. Each year, we as a county dedicate almost $100 million of taxpayer money to our schools. This year, we borrowed an additional $100 million for the new school campus. Sumner County is clearly dedicated to its students. But how can the board best ensure the efficiency and the effectiveness of hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars? We need more focus on impartial, objective criteria with which to assess school leadership performance. As a simple start, each month, the school board should monitor and discuss certain metrics, such as, but certainly not limited to, dollars per student, dollars per average GPA, teacher employment turnover, teacher opinion surveys about programs and curriculum, and projected enrollment and capacity. Furthermore, to stabilize the school's effect on county taxes, I want to plant the seed for a rolling 10-year strategic planning process. The process would connect the dots between long-term strategy and the plans of the near term. The process would include a recurring assessment of planned to actual deviations, and whether the plan requires adjustments or additions. The plan would harmonize items such as projected enrollment and capacity, facility planning, budgeting, budget to actual variances, and other items. For the next interim six months and the next elected four years, my ultimate goal would be enabling students to make educated, positive contributions to their community. But accomplishing this goal requires the school board's partnership with the county commission. Again, this appointment needs to look to the future of our county. I would be honored to be part of serving Sumner County, and I ask for your support in nominating and voting for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matsumoto. Mr. John Genon. Mr. Genon, the same rules that I just spoke about, our chamber rules, and you'll have five minutes, if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record, and then Mr. Kemp will start the clock.
This is John Genon, 1100 Locke 4 Road, here in Gallatin, Tennessee, for 30 years. I come before you as someone who wants to help develop the schools that we need within Sumner County. Not the ones that we wished we had, not the ones we wished we had built, but the ones that we are going to have to build in order to stay competitive. I'm a civil engineer, had 10 years with TVA, building nuclear plants, and every other type of building you can think of. We are on the cutting edge of that type of technology. I think with using that, as opposed to going out and engaging an architect, engaging a contractor, competing for pricing, there are better ways of doing it. When I left TVA, I went straight to the Army Corps of Engineers, up at Fort Campbell, Kentucky. And the first thing I did, they said, "Here, John, do something different." We developed a free school with all the learning experiences that you would expect. However, we did it for 35% below the projected cost, by using the correct materials and being able to reassemble the school as it grew, and be added on to. The main things that we look at are the design justification. We don't build schools just because we have the money to build schools, or we think that we're gonna have the money, or we think we're gonna have the need. What we had to do was justify what we did to our commanding officers, and they had to justify it to the Army, to the Central Command. If we needed it, we got it. If we didn't, we didn't get it. The things I was responsible for was not only the design and the selling of our design, it was the justification for the school, and also the construction schedule. You can't say this is a schedule and ignore it. You have to say it's a schedule and move on. That's what it is. You take on the appearance of the owner, and without that commitment, you will not be able to do your best work. When I left, when I left the civil engineering at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, I thought I was done. FEMA reached up to me and said, "Colonel, let's get it done." We went through Cincinnati, we went through Sandy, we went up and down the east coast, went to the west coast. We built schools, we built housing, we built responsible building, and we were always, always, less than the competitive outside cost. Even after we designed it, we were asked to stay on as project managers, so we could keep the train on the tracks. I have a brother, he was coach here, Ken Genon, for 30 years. I have a sister-in-law, who was Pam Genon for another 20 years. I have a daughter, I have a daughter at school. But it goes on and on, but the bottom line I'm trying to get to is that we need to move forward. We need to be smart in moving forward, design your schools for your needs today, but don't forget you have robotics coming. You have new technology, you have film and computers and communication systems. That's what you'll be learning in school. That's how you need to design your schools. As FEMA would say, get it done and get the hell out of the way. I ask you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Genon. I actually played football for your brother many years ago. Mr. Robert Lee.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you this evening. I come tonight to announce to you that I was gonna seek the office of school board, vacated by Mr. Jim Hawkins, and I was gonna run in the general election, and I was hoping that I might be nominated for that position tonight. However, Mr. Hawkins, whoever fills the position, has got big shoes to fill, and they're gonna have a big, they're gonna have big shoes to fill, basically. I think it is a wonderful tribute to her husband that Ms. Hawkins is willing to serve in that position and fill the term, and if she decides to run in that position, I'd And if she decides to run in that position, I'd be happy to support her. But tonight, I'm asking you to accept, allow me to back out of it. And 20 years ago, I sat in this room as the county commissioner with Merrill Hyde, and he was the director of schools. And it was shortly after Columbine High School shooting. And Mr. Hyde had come to me and approached me with the possibility of starting a countywide school resource officer program. And we did. And my vision back then was that we would eventually have school resource officers in all of our high schools, middle schools, and even our elementary schools. And 22 years later, that seems to have happened with a good sheriff and mostly a good county commission that has been willing to defund that program over the years. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate, from the bottom of my heart, allowing that to happen. And praise be to God, in those 22 years, we have never had a Columbine incident in Sumner County, and it's been because of the commitment to that program. And I thank you for this opportunity. But like I said, I'm going to bow out tonight, and I think it's a wonderful tribute you served at that term for your husband. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Betsy Hawkins.
My name is Betsy Hawkins. I live at 475 Baypoint Drive in Gallatin. I want to start by saying thank you for the certificate of recognition for my husband. I was a little choked up a minute ago, and I was not able to speak, but I am now. And I just want you to know that I know he would be so honored, and I and our family are so honored. I have felt moved to step up and finish the job that my husband started. I have a college degree from Center College, a degree in English and secondary education. I went back and got my paralegal degree in Atlanta, and much of that time was spent, my early times, was spent working with law firms. And I actually submitted my letter and resume to you earlier, and I'm, did you all get to see that? Because I have extra copies, if you didn't. I spent a lot of years raising three children with my husband, and all in public school, both in Birmingham. And then, when we moved here in 2002, we moved back home to Jim's hometown. I was very active in their activities, in the PTOs, served as an officer. I served as president of the band boosters at Gallatin High School for a couple of years. And I actually had the benefit of many discussions with Jim as he served on the board, discussing some of the issues that the Board of Education is dealing with. So I would like to ask for your vote. I do hope to run in the next election as well, but I would like very much to finish what my husband started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Mr. Robert C. Newton, Chef Christopher.
Christopher Newton, 1072 Patty Plunk Circle. What I'm talking about is nowhere near as important as what's going on with these men and women running for this office. This is nothing at all. Before I begin with, I want to say, you know, I'm not the best public speaker. I'm passionate. If you're not a passionate chef, then you're not a very good chef. So I might say something that's out of decorum, and it's not personal. Some of my really good friends here disagree with me. I've had to apologize to a few of you over the past things I've said up here. But this is really, really important to me. If y'all had the same guts that y'all have, you know, passing taxes and sewers and, you know, everything else that you do, and it's color barn, it's going to pass because I know it's going to pass. I'm positive of it. There's nothing I can do about it. If y'all had that much drive to help, you know, the business people, this community, and not take away from them, that would, that'd be great, but I don't think it's going to happen. I wish you'd do something with it that has nothing to do with competing against businesses, whether it's 4H, a library, anything. I care, that's what it is. But it can't be an event center, guys. It cannot. You know? When it all started, this, this event center was announced at a luncheon at my event center. Boy, how would you like that? How would you like that? You know, in the middle of whatever you do with your realtor, have another realtor come in and says, "Yeah, I'm opening another realtor right next to you." I mean, you know, right next door, that wouldn't make you happy. It would make you passionate. If you're not passionate about anything, you know, you're passionate about nothing. You know, I love what I do. I fed most of y'all in here, and y'all been in my place. You know, and I just can't lose it. I've got too much to count on to lose this thing. You know? If y'all do, which I know you're going to pass something, I'm positive of that. I mean, y'all already, your foot's in there, it's going to happen. If you're going to do something, if you're going to anything, have somebody for the event business on this committee, or whatever y'all want to call it, board, or whatever that word is that y'all use. I'm not a politician. I don't know these levels of command y'all have. But I know it starts from the top and morsures way down, and the top guy says, "We're fixing this barn." So there's nothing to be, people over here, none of people here, it's going to change. I think, guys, they have said, "I put my foot down, this is happening." You know, I don't want to be on the board. Get somebody bags me. He's more of a politician than I am. You know, my passion leaks out too much, and I'm liable to say the wrong thing. I mean, I've had to, Mr. Hold here. I've had to personally apologize to his face. Said, "I'm sorry for what I said. I did not mean what I said. It just came out wrong." But guys, use common sense, that's all I'm asking. One time, you know, just do the right thing. That's all, that's all these people ask of y'all. You know, this is important to me. Well, I would have been up here for the fifth, sixth time. I don't have time to be here. I'm a hard-working man. I got to be at work at 4:00 in the morning. I was there to 4:00 this morning, so I walked the door and came here. So, you know, that's all I have to say, you know what I mean? Just be smart about it, please. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Mr. John Miller. Mr. Miller, if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record.
I'm John Miller, 104 Pond Drive in Gallatin. I just want to say one thing to Betsy. I used to publish the newspaper, and on Wednesday night, Jim used to come in about 7:00, and he used to edit with me every single Wednesday. I'll never forget that. Bless you. Allow me to pose a question to all of you. If someone offered you a fixer-upper house for $10, but you had to spend $250,000 of your own money, your own money, to fix it, and the previous owner could take it back if they didn't like it, would you spend your money on that deal? And if you wouldn't spend your money on that deal, then I would ask each of you to stand up tonight and state exactly why you'll spend the taxpayers' money, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Kevin Begert.
Kevin Begert, 424 A.B. Wade Road. As some of you heard during the Budget Committee, I was fairly astonished to hear that we're going to spend $250,000 of citizens of Sumner County's money, plus $250,000 of the state of Tennessee citizens' money, to create a plan, to do something that a lot of citizens already don't see the need for or are concerned with. We just heard about that. But that's not what I want to talk about right now. We're going to spend a bunch of money to create a plan. I respectfully submit to this group that you set up a committee of citizens to work with the person, the project manager, to develop what the plan is. Because here's something that I don't see, and I was astonished when I looked through the package, that I didn't see any kind of requirements of what the expectations are for this manager that's going to develop this plan. So to me, what it looks like is a big old black hole, unless somebody already has the plan written down, and if they do, I'd love to see it. And I think some of the citizens would love to see it. I mean, the reason why a bunch of us stand up here, month after month after month, concerned is because we bring our concerns, we get, you know, a little nod and a, "Yeah, move along, move along, Kevin." But honestly, why not put together a team of citizens? And I'm not talking about, you know, real estate developers. I'm talking about people that are impacted. Here's where you have the opportunity to make up for a lot of sins of the last several years, where it's a bunch of smoke and mirrors. And I would respectfully ask, I'd love to see somebody make an amendment to this resolution and say that this plan must contain a citizen advisory council or something that basically looks at it and says, "Yeah, we can live with that." And we get by in. Don't you think that would be a whole lot easier than month after month after month going through this? Maybe y'all don't think so. Maybe in the end, y'all benefit somehow that I don't see. But honestly, it's a simple fix, okay? We've had in the past these ad hoc committees. Of course, I've never really seen any true citizen involvement, but here's your opportunity to fix all of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Begert. Ms. Rachel Solier.
My name is Rachel Solier. I live at 242 Kirkpatrick Drive in Gallatin. Four years ago, I ran for the school board seat that is currently vacant. My three boys and I did a lot of campaigning. It was one of the best experiences that I've had. I don't really plan to do it again, but it was a lot of fun. And at the end of the day, I wrote a Facebook post that said, "God called me to run, but he didn't call me to win. He called Mr. Hawkins to win that seat." And what a pleasure it was to get to know him, and we've kept in touch so much throughout the years. He's posted several pictures of my boys on social media. They're pretty active in the community as well, and it's certainly a loss for our community. So I just wanted to come and speak on behalf of Mrs. Hawkins. I cannot think of a better way to honor Jim's legacy than for you all to vote her into this position. It's also my district, and as a voting member and community member of Gallatin, I was just reflecting on a post that I wrote the day after the election, and just reading Mr. Hawkins' response to that as well, it was just incredibly touching. And I said, my 10-year-old, after the election, he said, "Mom, you worked so hard, but I know that you didn't win because God has better plans for you. I now work with the school system again. I thought 14 years in middle school was enough, but I'm doing it again." And I love my job every day. I'm a sign language interpreter with a deaf student, and contrary to social media posts, I'm not here to run for this position. I'm here to just support Ms. Hawkins. So I would ask that you all vote and allow her to continue her husband's legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solier. That concludes our recognition of the public tonight. We will move on now to elect, to fill the vacancy in the 6th Board of Education District. And let's see, Mr. Kemp, do you need to give any, do you need to read the notice?
Pursuant to Tennessee Code, as well as the Tennessee Constitution, as well as Tennessee Code, Section 55111, notice is hereby given that on Monday, January 27, 2020, at approximately 7:00 PM, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners shall assemble in the county commission chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building. With respect to filling the vacancy of the Sumner County School Board for the 6th District created by the death of James Hawkins, the purpose of this special meeting is to consider, deliberate, and possibly vote on a person to serve as interim school board member for the 6th District until the remaining term is filled as required by the state statutory and constitutional requirements. This special election will be held during the regular called meeting of this body on the aforementioned date. Voters of Sumner County are invited to submit names. They shall do that. They could submit names to the county clerk's office. The position must be filled in accordance to all applicable state statutes, rules, and regulations. Anyone having interest, desiring to comment, or ask questions concerning the above referenced issue is invited to attend the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Sullivan.
We had an opportunity to go through and look at the resumes, and I'm assuming everyone has done that, and we heard tonight from four qualified candidates, even though Mr. Lee has backed out. But with about seven months left on that term, I would like us to consider Ms. Betsy Hawkins filling the remainder of that term of her husband's seat, and then encourage all four of those candidates, or those people, to run as a candidate for that seat in the August election.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan nominates Ms. Hawkins. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Baker Ring and Commissioner Steve Graves. All right. Do we have any other nominations? Let's see. Commissioner Baker Ring, you're next in the queue.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Ms. Hawkins. I've known the Hawkins family since shortly after they came to town, and Betsy is as qualified to hold the seat as her husband was, and so I encourage her appointment to fill the vacancy left by the untimely death of her husband. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move to the nomination of David Matsumoto.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion to nominate Mr. Matsumoto. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mansfield. Mr. Mansfield, you're next in the queue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to move to nominate John Janong.
Okay. Mr. John Janong is nominated by Commissioner Mansfield. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Commissioner Foster.
I'm sure a lot of us have stories that we could tell about Mr. Hawkins, and I just want to relate to the chamber, the last one I had. I was asked to direct traffic for the Chamber of Commerce St. Patrick's Day Fun Run they had last March, and it was rainy and cold, and as you might know, those people dress up in outlandish costumes. And so I was looking through a rain-swept windshield, and I saw this big nut running backwards, taking pictures of the crowd, and then running forward and getting in there and taking selfies and all that. And I said, "Oh, during the clearing windshield." I said, "That's Jim." And that's just the epitome of how he approached life and how he approached interacting with our citizens, and I can't think, again, of a more fitting tribute to his legacy and his service to our community to let his wife fill out his term. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. I see no one else in the queue. We have three nominations. We have Ms. Betsy Hawkins, Mr. David Matsumoto, and Mr. John Janong. Okay, so here are our directions. If you would like, we're doing it alphabetically, so if you would like to vote for Mr. Janong, you will push your green button. If you would like to vote for Ms. Hawkins, you will push your yellow button. If you would like to vote for Mr. Matsumoto, you will push your red button. So again, Mr. Janong, green, Ms. Hawkins, yellow, Mr. Matsumoto, red. Everybody clear on that? Any questions? All right, let's vote.
The vote is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
It's not working, Mr. -- there it goes, there it goes. With 22 votes, we're excited to announce that Ms. Betsy Hawkins is elected to the Sumner County School Board. Now, I would like to take a point of personal privilege, and Ms. Hawkins just expressed my congratulations. As Mr. Foster said, there's so many wonderful stories. As Mr. Foster said, there's so many wonderful stories. I remember, you know, my story is, I remember at a time when I was called, when I was very young in administration, I was called to speak at a function, and it was sort of a hostile environment. And I remember, you know, I went in, did my best, wasn't sure how I did, and two days later, almost like clockwork, I received a note from Mr. Hawkins thanking me for taking the time to speak and explain things and how much he appreciated my time and effort and work in the schools. So thank you. I know it's a big deal for your family to support, to support the public and to work in the city of Gallatin, and we're honored to see you serve out his term. So thank you for your commitment to service. And Mr. Janong, Mr. Matsumoto, we thank you for putting your names forward. You know, the best thing in civil, in public service is many times we have to struggle to get people to step forward, to put their names forward, and it's good for our democracy to have people willing to step forward and serve their community. So I would like to, I'd like to commend everyone who put their name forward. So thank you. All right, we'll move, we'll move now to our approval of consent agenda items. Would someone like to move to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Echols. Second made by Commissioner Baker Ring. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your county officials' reports are on the desk. And is there a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor. He beat you by a half second. Second by Commissioner Sullivan. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered, all 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? 22 affirmative votes, they are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Committee on Committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met in a regular scheduled meeting tonight, January 27, 2020. We had the, Don Dickerson is expiring, resigns from his term, and the county executive appointed Sean Utley. It was unanimous, and I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Goode. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Echols. See no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I should have mentioned in advance for the record, that was Board of Zoning Appeals. Library Board, Mary Ann Mudd resigns her term of July 2020. County Executive Director Beth Popick. It was unanimous, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode. Second by Commissioner Echols. No one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the Agriculture Extension Service two-year term, it was the county mayor's recommendation to reappoint Alan Driver, Commissioner Alan Driver, Commissioner Carolyn Kruger, Carl Cooper, the farmer, and Eddie Kirkpatrick. It was a group and approved, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode. Second by Commissioner Ring. No one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Mr. Chairman, on the back of your report, there is next month's business, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Sullivan.
No education report for January.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Hinton.
The road list is in the packet.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve the Highway Commission, or excuse me, not the Highway Commission, the official road list of Sumner County. Sorry about that. Who had the second? I'm sorry. Commissioner Graves has the second. Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're in the queue.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There is a mistake on page 17 of the road list. There, it's called, the road is called, on the list, it's called Ransom Mandrell. It's supposed to be Ransom Mandrell.
Okay.
M-A-N-D-R-E-L-L.
Okay. Without objection, we're going to make that, we're going to make that change.
That was named after my great-grandfather.
Okay.
So I made sure that it wasn't, the mailing address, I texted my cousin, and she said, it's Ransom Mandrell, M-A-N-D-R-E-L-L. So, and it's consistent, though, but the road sign's wrong, too, so.
Okay. Well, we may need to get, you think we need to get Ms. Harden to check that?
Yeah, we need to check that if the road sign's wrong.
Road sign spelled wrong, and that's wrong on this list.
I think we need to do more fixing than just correct the map.
Okay. All right, so it's not a clerical, it's not a clerical. We're going to need to investigate this, Mr. Taylor.
I just, we'll move to refer it back to the Highway Committee.
Second.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll refer that back to the Highway Committee, and we will check on that. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All right, Mr. Hinton, anything else for Highway? Okay. General Ops, Michelle.
No report, sir.
Emergency Services. Ms. Kruger's out. Okay. Legislative.
No report, sir.
Okay. Financial Management, Mr. Becker.
No report.
Okay. Budget Committee, Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Yes, sir. One point of reference, we had discussion during the meeting about water services for parts of the county that don't have it right now. When we went through all the fact-finding, what it boils down to is, as of right now, everything's been done that can be done. And when I say that, they've got the money they've got. They can't get any additional funds because they haven't spent what they've gotten so far. We can't apply for any more grants because those haven't been exhausted yet. And so the next step was to have the utilities districts actually identify what would be the next roads they want to try and make improvements on. That's not really set up yet. So what we said was, we would have an ad hoc committee that would form. Commissioner Taylor's already asked to be on that, obviously. And they would work with the utility districts to try and formulate a list that we would at least have for, as we're trying to do five-year operational, 20-year capital, this would kind of fall in line with that of giving us an idea over the next, you know, five, 10 years, what the roadways would be, or what roads would have water added to them as it came along, as money became available from grants. The only reason I'm bringing it up now is if anybody else was interested besides just the people that are there for budget, please let us know. And then that way, over the next month or so, when we get it set up, we'll know who's interested. When I say interested, I mean commissioners, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Yes, sir. Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Graves. And y'all don't have to tell me right now. We can just let Ms. Denham know or myself, and then we'll get it together. That was just for a point of information on that part. 2001-02, defining Sumner County criteria for considering a process for administering outside agency funding requests. I move for discussion. And what this was, we had tasked a committee with figuring out a better way for us to do our nonprofits. What we've done is we've just kind of given money, and there's been no rhyme or reason over the years. Some groups have gotten it, and so they've always gotten it, and some have gotten more or less. And what this has done, and Ms. DeWitt and her group did a fantastic job, is they've broken it down into, in three different types of categories. And I think everybody read the resolution, but what it boils down to is there's rural fire, and then there's services that are provided, economic and welfare of the county, and then there's nonprofits. And those specific nonprofits is what we've kind of talked about for years, elderly citizens, meals on wheels, things like that. And what we're going to do is, if we agree to it, we'll have a number set aside for the budget. So we'll do the budget process like we always have, and what we'll say is, okay, this year we've got $30,000. This year, we have $50,000. This year, whatever the number might be, to appropriate towards those specific nonprofits. Now, it doesn't say who gets what in that process, which is something we used to always do. And then instead, what will happen is when we decide exactly how much money we, the county can afford to give, then after the budget's done, there'll be a committee group that meets, that will go over, they'll take in the applications from all the different groups, they'll review it, and they'll decide who gets what, how much, and they kind of define in the resolution about, obviously, if you've been there a while, and with new groups and limits on that. So I move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeWitt. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yes, sir. I would like to strike some language from this resolution. On the front page, down at the very bottom, where it says A, and under that, Item A, rural fire departments located in rural, non-municipal areas providing fire responder, fire and emergency services to residents, businesses, schools, and organizations in their area. The reason is, the Westmoreland Volunteer Fire Department is located in the municipality of Westmoreland. So that would knock them out with this language. So I'd like to strike that.
Okay. Motion, make an amendment to strike that language.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Amendment to strike the language.
Second.
Hang on, I got, Mr. Smith, I got a second. Let me try to figure out the language here.
Ever how y'all need to come up with a language where we don't eliminate one just because they're in the city limits. They're not, Westmoreland does not have a paid, full-time fire department like the city of White House does, the city of Portland, the city of Gallatin, or Hendersonville. They are primarily volunteer, and they service three schools in that city.
Okay. So if we went with, Commissioner, if we went with volunteer fire agencies and then took out rural, non-municipal areas, so if we said volunteer fire agencies providing first responder fire and emergency services to residents, businesses, schools, and organizations in their area, would that work?
Same.
Okay. Said that pretty fast. It made sense, perfect sense in my head. The title would be volunteer fire.
The title would still say rural fire departments, because that's the topic that they had, had been.
Okay.
Volunteer fire agencies.
Okay.
Providing first responder.
Okay. So under rural fire departments, it would say volunteer fire agencies providing first responder fire and emergency services to residents, businesses, schools, and organizations in their area. Does that work? Let me ask, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner DeWitt, do y'all have a problem with that change?
I don't.
Okay. Is that good, Mr. DeWitt?
Good.
Okay. But without objection, we're just going to make that the main motion. The maker and the second are fine with that, and, right. Yeah, I'm just saying, the original, I'm saying, they're willing to change the language. Okay. Mr. Taylor, did you have anything else? Is that, okay. Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Commissioner DeWitt for taking this up and driving action on this. It's been talked about for the past few years about having a better way of handling the process for the nonprofits' requests and so forth, and just wanted to definitely thank her and definitely I support what the resolution we're looking at right now, so thanks.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Becker, I remember our first year on budget, we wondered how nonprofits were done and realizing, you know, you feel bad for the newer ones and, you know, the process that it's under. So, Mr. DeWitt, I'd also like to thank you for your, for your work on that, on your ad hoc. No one else in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Taylor.
Yes, sir. 2001-03, authorizing a plan for the Cormer Barn Preservation. I so move for discussion, and this is one per the resolution to tap into the state funds. There's still some, unless Commissioner Mansfield found out, got an exact answer, there's some questions to how much we actually have to put forward. But what we said was, whatever we did need to put forward to activate that grant will be done initially from the hospital fund with this explicit amount being reimbursed by either private funds raised or tourism. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Second by Commissioner Gammenden. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, I came to the last, the budget meeting and had some, you know, different ideals for the uses of the building and everything, and I've shared those with citizens and constituents. But I have a question first. I was on the General Ops Committee when, when this was first brought back up, and it was mentioned in that committee meeting that there was a private donor that was going to offer $40,000 for the naming rights of that facility. Is that still current, and is that tied to this land behind the County Archives building?
Does anyone know to speak on a private donor, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Holt?
I have no idea. All I can say is that we've had different people.
Hang on one second, Mr. Taylor. Sorry. Hang on one second.
I don't have any idea about the other part, as far as being tied to naming rights or anything like that. That would fall into the county's jurisdiction. But I do know that since we had the initial discussions, there've been different groups that have come up and said they would help us raise money, and kind of like what you talked about with the question. It hasn't been brought up in budget.
Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, there, from the onset, and this has been several years ago, there is a banking institution that would pay up to $40,000 to go towards signage for the naming rights of the facility. That's correct.
That's tied to the land back here behind?
No.
Okay.
It's a, it's a publicly owned banking institution.
Okay.
All right.
Well, after that, you know, I had ideas that I could support moving this forward that I spoke about the other night with the agricultural-related activities. Well, in the meantime, what I told you first was if the deed was changed. This resolution doesn't address that.
The last part of the resolution.
Well, this, what I, the way I view this is, the constituents told me, do not approve anything until you have a deed in front of you that's in the best interest of the hard-working, tax-paying citizens of Sumner County. I don't have that in front of me. That should be in front of me before I approve anything. And I understand that may not be the way we do things, but that, that's the only way that I can support something that doesn't have reverters, that doesn't say anything about, you know, the uses, if they don't like the way it's used, they take it away from you. That gives us more than five foot around the building. So, and most especially, that we don't enter into a venture that competes against private businesses. That's, that's number one. So it's kind of, in my old country adage, is put in the cart before the horse, this resolution is. Because this resolution, my, my interpretation of this resolution, and interpretation is, is, you know, what I was told at the state, is the interpretation of the resolution is the law. So my interpretation of this resolution is, we approve this tonight, it opens the floodgates for the $250,000 to be spent. Well, that can be done in committee, never come back before us because we've proven this resolution. You see what I'm saying? So then we go out and spend hypothetically $250,000. Well, guess what? We've already spent $250,000, so we can't turn back now. We got to keep moving forward. I just, I can't vote for that. I mean, I just can't support it. I've had too many. This has been one of the hottest topics I've ever had since I've been here. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Mr. Hinton.
This, from, from the time this project came up, why, I was totally in. And I'm, I have prejudices, and it's for the preservation of what we've been, where we've was and where we've come to. And I think that, to me, this barn falls in the category of worth saving. Now, what I'd really hate to see happen is that, that this barn takes on a stigma that we've done things different than what the public explanation of all of the things we said we were going to do. So I don't think this, I don't think this resolution ought to pass the way it's written. I think this resolution ought to pass after the clarification with the Rogers Group. I think this resolution ought to pass after a designed program for accepting money, private money, how we're going to compensate when we built the libraries. We had brass plaques on the wall, and if you, if you donated so much money, you got to be platinum. I wasn't platinum. So much money, you got to be gold. I wasn't gold. I think I got to be brass or lead or something, but.
Did you get off the plaque, Mr. Hinton?
Yeah. But, but anyway, there is a, there is a real good professional way to go out, to reach out to the public, to gather in money. And, and families will do this in memory of, of people. I think it's, I think it's a great project. I think the, the preservation of the structure is more important than what we ultimately use it for. And, and let's not, let's do whatever it takes where nobody in Sumner County can say they slipped another one by us. We just must not do it that way. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that we, I'm gonna move that we, we pass this contingent on, if I've been clear enough to list those things, that the, the process for, for taking private funds be established and published, that the Rogers Group put in writing, and that document be presented here in its entirety. And, and when, when all of that is done, with whatever changes, we would ask for them. And even the process, I mean, are we gonna dry it in and stop? Are we gonna dry it in and keep going? I mean, there's been some discussion about preservation, and then preservation becomes, then you gotta talk about utilization. And I'm dead-set then for preservation. I'm not, some of the things that the utilization has been talked about, it's been tossed out to discussion, I'm not for at all. There was even some statements thrown around about we might move a county office out there. Wouldn't vote a nickel for it if we planned to do that. Are we gonna have, let us have elections out there? Maybe. That's not too bad. So, I just think we're, I think we're a little shallow on information to commit this money and walk away from it. So, my motion is that we can, and I don't care. We can do that motion either way, that table it, and those, those items be resolved and bring it back next month, or we can, we can pass it contingent on all of those things that'll be satisfied by next month. I'd, I'd rather think we'd be better off to table it for 30 days and get that kind of stuff straightened out.
Hang on, let me get a clarification real quick, Mr. Hinton.
Table it, defer, and it's no debate.
Okay.
But you have to tell where he wants it sent to.
Okay. Are you gonna table it back to Budget, Mr. Hinton?
I think it needs to go to John.
Or General Ops?
Yes. It, with, with the understanding that Budget will, will use the criteria that's been discussed here to vote it out of there, up or down.
Okay. Ms. Denon's suggesting that it goes to, Ms. Denon's suggesting that it goes to General Ops.
I think Budget is a perfect place for it to go back to.
Okay, Budget, okay. So, Mr. Hinton's motion is to table it, to table it to, to Budget. Seconded by Mr. Mansfield. There's no discussion on this motion to table, so we will vote a yes vote is to table it to Budget, a no vote is to keep it on the floor for further discussion.
All right. The motion to table is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 23 affirmative votes, the motion is tabled.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Commissioner Taylor.
Yes, sir. 2001-04, approving the distribution to individual fire, volunteer fire departments and expanding of amounts previously appropriated. What had happened was there was a second page that didn't make it into the packet, so it left two departments off, so the numbers didn't add up right. This corrects all of that, so. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Seconded by Commissioner Foster. Mr. Mansfield. Was that, are you in the queue now? I'm sorry. Or is that? Okay, okay. Commissioner Graves.
Uh, that was on the Michigan.
Okay. All right. No one's in the queue? All right, so, we're gonna take this vote, and then Mr. Gomendin has an announcement. So, we're not gonna adjourn immediately after this vote, okay? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gomendin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I should have made this announcement earlier when everybody else was making announcements. But February the 15th, at 6 o'clock, Portland Preservation Foundation is having our annual Sweetheart Dinner. And I think this is maybe the seventh year, but anyway, what makes this one special is that this one is gonna be at the Temple Theater. And after blood, sweat, tears, broken bones, and six years, last Thursday, we received from the Portland Building Inspector our certificate of occupancy. And. Thank you. But that was just on one side. This is a fundraiser, and we talk about raising funds and all that. And let me tell you what, it is very, very difficult. These tickets are $100 apiece, and we see how many people will pay $100 for a ticket to raise money for something that can be the heartbeat of your community. And the other side of this is a 250-seat theater that really would be the heart of Portland and our whole, our whole county and community. We have talked to people at Actors Point even, that was mentioned tonight, and they would do spin-off things there. But anyway, we're at least another year away from that, and equipment is very expensive. But we'd just like, we usually have a flyer by now, and the ticket's done, and they are done. My wife, Denise, usually does that. She's been a little bit detained this year, but she, it is done, and we'll get them printed very soon. But if anybody would like tickets, it is a fun evening. We have memory keepers. The theater building closed in 1956, and we are running out of people that remember dating there, hiding out up in balcony, and all kinds of things that, that we've been told. And it was also a big deal in Portland during World War II. That's where everybody came to watch the newsreels and watch their sons and daughters, you know, even hoping to get a glimpse of them on the battlefield or in service overseas. So, it's been a very important place, and we've been very passionate about trying to bring it back, and it's been more difficult than, than we actually thought. But this one side is, it is, it really looks nice.
That's wonderful.
Tickets are valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Is there a motion to, Mr. Graves, you, hang on, hang on. Mr. Graves is in the queue.
I just got a couple of comments. All I had on my mind today, I was on the computer looking at the Comer Barn, and I actually drove down there and looked at it, and, yeah, right, it's, Mr. Gomendin, it's, it's pretty bad shape. But all I could think about was dirty water. I seen some on the internet when I was looking today. We've come a long ways with this water, and I don't wanna leave out this picture, too, the outdoor toilet. But we've come a long ways on this, and we've got a lot further to go. And I think we're going in the right direction with that, as we've been doing since 2008 or '09 or so, when we started this program. The other thing I've got is the roads. I still got ducks and potholes up there, and I know you can laugh, but it is funny. But the roads, we need to put some money toward our county roads and do some things with that. If we're gonna, I'm for, I don't think, nobody wants to tear the barn down, and I'm for fixing the barn. But I think in the meantime, and simultaneous, that we should put some money toward, give the road superintendent, she's done a lot with the money she gets, but she don't get enough. So, if we could do that, and my other, my other thing is a motion to adjourn.
That was the longest motion to adjourn in history, I think, Mr. Graves.